I'd like to call the order to the Dallas City Council meeting for Monday, January 22, 2024. And before we get started, I want to read this message. Church at the Park has submitted an application for emergency shelter on Holman Avenue in Dallas pursuant to House Bill 3395, which is in 2023. This application is currently being reviewed by the city staff, which is scheduled for a public hearing before the city council at a future date and time. Public comments, both written or oral, will be accepted after the public hearing has been scheduled. The city council will not receive public comment on the subject of the proposed project at this council meeting. Public comment on homelessness in general will be received, but comments on a particular project should be reserved for the public hearing. Secretary, please call the roll.
Council President Schilling?
Here.
Counselor Adams?
Here.
Counselor Bariantos?
Here.
Counselor Briggs?
Here.
Counselor Collins?
Present.
Counselor Fitzgerald?
Here.
Counselor Jantsch?
Here.
Counselor Shane?
Here.
Counselor Verden?
Here.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next thing on the agenda is introductions.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two introductions tonight for employees. We'll start with Heather Taylor from our police department.
Good evening. I'd like to introduce the news member of the police department in the records section, this is Melissa Meyer. Melissa grew up within the city of Dallas, she has attended school here, she's been in several sports as well. She fills the role as the records clerk. Melissa brings with her knowledge of the criminal justice system, she worked for Judge Clark in his private practice. As many of you know, Judge Clark is the municipal court judge for the city of Dallas. Please welcome her.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to meet you all. You see a familiar face or two. I'm truly excited to be a part of the city and to be a part of Dallas, P D. I am confident that under the leadership of Heather and Chief Simpson, that will make a significant contribution to the county.
Thank you.
And then our second introduction will be done by Chief Wallace.
When she finishes, we're getting to the face.
Good evening. I'd like to introduce you to Melissa Christman. A couple of you may know her already. I'm really excited to have Melissa be part of our team. She is our executive assistant. We've waited a long time for her. I can tell you that I think already she has already contributed significantly and this is like a big work for her. So we're really excited to see what's going to happen. When we did our interviews, the interview with myself and Chief Rogers was only about 25 minutes. We ended up talking to Melissa for 45 minutes. And then I told her husband, beginning with Melissa, at the end of our interview, I got, just during that time, I got this very wonderful feeling from Melissa and where her heart is. Those of you that know me know I have a servant's heart, and Melissa does too. And so I think with that, she will contribute greatly to our department. I did tell her husband that at the end of our interview, probably not the most appropriate day, but I wanted to hug her. I didn't hug her. But I just felt such a connection with her and felt that what she was going to bring to our department would just help around us a lot. Melissa lives in Dallas with her husband Brad, who you may know from the safety right, and her son, who doesn't want to be in this room. But we're really happy to have her, and please welcome her.
I wasn't anticipating to say anything, but since Melissa did, I will too be brave enough. I'm just very excited to be joining the department, and I am excited about the opportunities to make it my own and to bring my special skills that do it. I would never sit down because I'm a chatter in a hub or two. So I'm just really excited about serving my community, but I think it's a long, long way to go.
Welcome aboard. Okay, next on the agenda is a proclamation. City of Dallas, Polk County, Oregon, Fire Service Appreciation Day. Whereas all Dallas residents greatly benefit from the selfless service of our skilled and dedicated firefighters, each of us having an additional sense of security, knowing that they are there for us to combat fires and the destructions for what they bring into our lives. And whereas firefighters face a miserable risk every time they run to answer the alarm, rush to a fire, medical emergency, or a vehicle accident where there is sometimes dire can never be equitably known. And whereas proud individuals who become Dallas firefighters perform a means the invaluable public service in saving lives, protecting property, and promoting community values. And whereas this occasion provides our elected leaders with the opportunity to celebrate the day-to-day heroism of all firefighters serving Dallas with a courage to all Dallas residents to join us to humbly express our enduring gratitude to the remarkable people who wear the firefighter's uniform in our community. Therefore, I cannot tell which junior mayor of the city of Dallas who, by proclaiming January 27, 2024, is Fire Service Appreciation Day in the city of Dallas.
And Mayor, if I can, real quick, we have a number of our firefighters here amongst us tonight. If I can have them stand, we can give them a round of applause.
My guest there is Art Johnson, who's on the city council for many years. He was a longtime firefighter, and he told me once, "The only time you take shortcuts is on the way to a fire." I'll never forget those. So thank you very much.
And then Mayor, before we jump on, can I do one more recognition real fast?
Sure.
I just want to recognize in front of the council with everyone here. So our public safety personnel, including our public works department, during this last ICE event, just did such a great job. And that includes even non-state personnel. Our power provider, Pacific Power, we had zero outages, but they were staged in and around the community in order to respond if there was one. I just want to recognize our fire EMS, our police officers in police department, and our public works department and the great work that they did. They got our roads cleared as fast as they could, given the ice that was on the ground, and made it at least drivable even when it was icy with all the gravel that was down the road. So I just want to thank them and say thank you.
I just also want to make sure that we thank city leadership for making sure there was a good plan in place to have all that go smoothly, because that didn't happen by accident. So thank you.
And for the record, you don't have to stay.
Us too.
See you later. Who all does that apply to? So next on the agenda is a public hearing and application of zone change for 520 Southeast Henkel Street.
All right, so you have a script to read.
Yep. I'm going to open it. No? I'm going to do the script. This is the time set for a public hearing on an application for a zone change of property of 520 Southeast Henkel. And land use file number zone change 23-01. I will now open the hearing at 7:09 PM. Are there any conflicts of interest or expedited contacts to be cleared by the council? This hearing will be conducted in the following manner. We will begin with a staff report, followed by questions from the council of staff. Therefore, we will hear from the applicant and/or the applicant's representatives for a total of 15 minutes. This may be followed by questions of them from the city council. Thereafter, we will hear from all others interested in presenting testimony on this item before the city council. Each person will be provided three minutes to testify. Comments submitted by phone will be taken after in-person comments have been completed. If you will be testifying, please direct your testimony to the applicable criteria identified in the staff report, or any criteria that you believe should be applicable. We will then provide the applicant with five minutes for rebuttal. After we have heard all the testimony, I will close the hearing and ask the city council to deliberate and ask if there is a motion in response to this proposal. Will staff please prepare their reports?
Yes, thank you. Chase Baloo, city planner for the city of Dallas. So zone changes are subject to five approval criteria in the Dallas Development Code. They have to be consistent with the statewide planning goals. They have to be consistent with the comprehensive plan for the city of Dallas. Public facilities, that's the water, the streets, the sewer, have to have adequate capacity to support development of the site. The changes in the public interest, and the request conforms to the transportation planning rule under state law. So for reference, the project location is at 520 Southeast Henkel Street. And so we can see on the vicinity photo there that it's currently a single-family residence property, and it is quite deep compared to much of the surrounding neighborhood. As we look at the zoning map, we can see that the property is currently zoned low-density residential, but it does back up to high-density residential. And so the proposal is to extend that high-density residential zoning onto the property, as you can see in this depiction from the zoning map. This application went to the city council or the planning commission. They had favorable recommendation to approve the zone change as requested by the applicant. The staff report goes into greater detail on how the proposal specifically responds to the approval criteria as far as the comprehensive plan and statewide planning goals, but suffice it to say that it appears to meet all of the applicable requirements. Planning commission's recommendation was to approve. If you have questions of staff, certainly happy to answer them at this time.
Yeah, I do. Given, could you back up one slide?
Of course.
Yeah. Given the odd size and shape of that parcel, in practical terms, how do you see that being used for high density, given that it's got a single-family house on it now and it's such an odd shape and size?
Yes. So they have, the property owner has applied for and received partition for the existing dwelling to separate the dwelling itself from the remainder of the lot. When we look at the air photo, you can see, not so well since it's not that big on the screen, but there is a single-family home on the very front of the lot, fronting onto Henkel Street, and the back part of the lot is largely undeveloped. And so to the extent that that offers opportunity for development, my understanding is that Polk Community Development Corporation does have a plan for developing the back half of the property. And when it comes time for the applicant to speak, I'm sure they can speak in greater detail on that, although that's not a proposal in front of you tonight.
And following up on that, if Polk CDC or someone else decides to build higher-density housing on that little piece of land, how is the access going to work?
Yes. So there is the expectation that Pine Street will be extended through the property with development.
That's the street we see running parallel to Henkel there?
Yes. And if we look, it's a little clearer on the zoning map that Pine Street exists on either side of the property. And so the partition application that was received and approved included provision for the extension of that street through the property at such time as development occurs.
So the other property owner next to it is finally Pine Street going through?
So it would be a condition of development approval that that would happen, yes.
And theirs is not developed either?
Correct. Theirs is currently developed with a single-family home with the remainder of the parcel being undeveloped. But if further development of that property were to happen, the development code would require that that street be further extended.
Would the property owner, would that require the other property owners' permission or approval or contact or legally?
So it would be a condition of development approval, so in order...
If the other property owner were to propose to develop their property, the extension won't occur in the context of this zone change.
Right. So Pine Street, yeah. Pine Street will still be a dead end at this time.
Any other questions? Was there a reason in the initial application that that property looked like it was included in the zone change?
Yes. So we received an application from Polk Community Development Corporation for this property specifically 520. There has been discussion amongst staff in the past about having code language in the development code that would enable the planning staff to expand rezoning requests as seen fit for the orderly development of the city. Such language currently exists for annexations, and it would seem logical that such language should exist for zone changes. And it was my understanding that that had been added to the development code at a previous date. On further review, it appears that that language has in fact not been added. And so that proposal to expand onto the adjacent property with the rezoning was removed from the proposal that's going forward.
So what you're saying is we just can't automatically change it unless the property owner asks for it?
That would be a legislative decision rather than a quasi-legislative, quasi-digital?
Yeah. So the city council can initiate a zone change on a private property owner's land, but city staff can't.
Thank you. Any other questions for the staff?
This is Polk CDC, so this is a property tax exempt property?
They would have to speak more in depth on how they're intending to develop the property with regards to that. I don't have that information. It's outside of my purview.
And it's not a criteria.
Yeah. The applicant's going to give a presentation in a minute, and you can ask them questions. But the type of use is not a criteria for a zone change application. That would be part of a development permit.
Any more questions for the staff? And now we will hear from the applicant. As a reminder, you will have 15 minutes to present. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Rita Grady, Executive Director, Polk Community Development Corporation. Live at 12290 Ours Corner Road in Dallas. I'm really excited to present this action to you this evening. We've been working on it for quite a while. We're primarily affordable housing developers, working with families with children, some marginalized population like women who are coming out of prison and being reunited with their children. Some, we have some housing for persons with mental illness. We have probably 200 different houses or apartments throughout Polk County. We've been working in the affordable housing industry since 1989, and have worked with all the communities trying to get affordable housing in every community. And you know, we have a housing crisis now in Oregon. We have a housing crisis in Polk County. There's never enough housing, and rental housing in particular, the rents have gone up. So we're always looking for opportunities where we can plug in a few more affordable housing units. We purchased this property late 2022, looking ahead at another piece of property that we own here in Dallas at 179 Southwest Washington Street. It's always about strategizing where you can build affordable housing. The property on 179 Southwest Washington Street is also the location of our shop, in a building with two apartments above it. And if we are going to develop that property, which we have proposed, we have a proposal going now to build a property called Dallas Mill Station. That one will be a mixed-use building with 45 units of affordable housing units in the top three floors. However, that's on the property where our shop is. So we were really looking for another piece of property where we could utilize an existing shop or build a shop for our maintenance crew. We manage our own properties. We maintain the landscaping, and we have a crew of five employees in that area. This property had a large shop on it that was not being used. The property was vacant, and we made an offer on it, and we're successful. So we looked at what we could do ahead of that time, and our board supported that approval. We talked about building some housing for veterans. We've built several properties, some in Dallas, some in Independence, actually for homeless veterans, who were being helped by other organizations and were being put up in motels and hotels until they could find some permanent housing, not temporary housing, but permanent housing for them. So we knew this property had a proposed street right away in the middle of it, and we're always working with different organizations to see if they can provide infrastructure money for cities to be able to expand streets. And this last, this year, now the Biz Oregon, who manages the Community Development Block Grant Program, has made some changes and has gone to HUD to make some changes in their delivery of their funds to cities. One of the options is infrastructure that will support affordable housing. So we have worked with the city over many years, preparing grant applications for them to submit for housing rehabilitation for lower-income homeowners. We offered to do this for the city. We still are offering to do this for the city to try to help them get money for that street, and it will help us. Because what it will do, and I probably, I don't know if you've seen the layout of this, how it would look. If you are interested, I can pass these out. So I just want you to see that we're talking about only the streets on the property that we own. And so we have it surveyed, and it's going to work out very nicely, and we'll make a little property available at the north end of the site for a few, not a lot, but a few housing units for veterans. So we're really pretty excited about this opportunity and hope that you will consider it a valuable asset to the community. And we'll continue to work with the city in trying to get funds to do the infrastructure. In my opinion, the infrastructure comes first, and once the infrastructure is in, then we can build a few units for some veterans on the north end of the property. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does the city council have any questions of the applicant? Yes.
What kind of housing is this? Is it transitional, temporary?
No, no, no. It's permanent. I mean, once they move in, they can live there forever.
Forever.
And that's our expertise, is permanent housing. So we do have a few transitional units for some families that are trying to get their lives squared away, and after they live there two or three years, they're able to move into more permanent housing. So...
Yes, sorry. So on the south two parcels, is that where the shop is intended to go?
On the very, on the southernmost end, there's a 10,000 square foot lot, and that lot we are selling. That will close on the 24th, and we're selling it to a veteran family. And then parcel one, on the south side of the street, is where the shop is located. And so it will be accessed from the extension of the street.
So the existing home will be sold?
The home will be sold.
The north of that piece will be the shop, and then across the new?
And then across the street on the north end would be, I would say, medium-type housing, you know, which would be duplex, triplex, something in that area. And I'm not saying one. It could be, maybe it would provide six units for veterans, or six or eight.
But just as an note of the council, we're not in the development review. This is just a zone change. The developer will have to go through an entirely new process. So it's interesting to know what the plan is, but that's not in front of you tonight. Nor is there valid criterion for deciding. Nor isn't a criterion for deciding the zone change application.
Is it veterans' housing, or is it for anyone that's homeless?
No, this one would be for veterans.
Oh, this whole development would be to help homeless veterans?
Yes, would be veterans. I guess I have a bug on my shirt. It's permanent housing, and it's housing for veterans. And I'm not saying all of these veterans have been living on the streets or anything like that, but for one reason or another, they've come home and, you know, maybe they've lost their home, maybe their family is split up, you know.
It's just I thought I heard you say like, a mother and her children trying to get her children, I mean...
No, that's another property. How I just giving you an idea, yeah, I was giving you an idea of what kind of council we do.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Public testimony will now be allowed. Please state your name and address for the record. You have three... You have three minutes to testify. We will alert you when you have 30 seconds remaining. At the three-minute mark, your testimony will end. As a reminder, you'll be testifying. Please direct your testimony to the applicant, criteria identified in the staff report, or any criteria that you believe should be applicable. Anybody want to come forward and testify? Is there anybody waiting on the phone?
I have one caller that I'm not sure what they're wanting to comment on. So if they will come online and unmute themselves, if they want to provide comments for this. No, they didn't.
So we have nobody on the phone?
No.
Since we have no testimony.
No rebuttal.
So we will now allow it. Do any members of the council have any additional questions about this matter for the staff? There is no further discussion, I'll close the public hearing at 7:27. Is there any discussion by the council?
Plan, it's very straightforward. Planning commission voted unanimously to approve it. Sounds like a slam dunk. I mean, I take, everyone, I would need a lot of convincing to overturn a unanimous planning commission decision. Because this looks pretty straightforward.
There's a recommended motion on page five.
It's time to make a motion.
I move to adopt the recommendation of the planning commission to approve the zone change application to rezone the property located at 520 Southeast Tankle Street from low-density residential to high-density residential zoning. Further, I move to direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance amending the zoning map to reflect this action.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Notice a voter real call.
She can do a vote.
Y'all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, carried unanimously. An order reflecting the city council decision tonight will be mailed to the applicant and all participants of record within 10 business days. Thank you. Hey, next is public comment. Please provide us with your name and address for the record. He will come up to the table and talk to us. We have up to, you have up to three minutes. It is your turn to talk and our solicitor, you are responsible for the content, even if it's written by someone else. Please direct all comments to the mayor. Mayor will refer to staff for readily available information or for follow-up as needed. Advertory or libelious comments will not be accepted. Distractions take attention from the speaker. The audience, city council members, and the staff are asked to focus on the speaker during their time by any respectfully required. First one, Ann Hurd.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Ann Hurd, 623 Southwest Hater Street. I'm here to tell you a happy story about the power, the pump, that we need for the lazy river at the pool, which costs $30,000. That's just the pump. I was called by Jennifer, well, I was over at the pool. And Jennifer Ward came out of her office and said, "Oh, just the person I want to see. We need some more money." "Okay, well, what do you need?" She said, "We're buying the pump. We've picked it out, we're buying it, it's the best there is. We gotta have the lazy river going, folks. Everybody there uses the lazy river. And it's $30,000 and the city's gonna pay for it, but we don't have the money for the installation. So we just happen to have $8,000 in our trust fund, but that wasn't enough. They needed 13." I said, "I'm sure we have the money. I'll call David, our treasurer, and he'll bring you a check." So what we do is we keep $10,000 in our checking account just to pay for all the free swim passes and the party passes that we give away. In the first six weeks, in the last six weeks, we've gotten about $6,000 in manor rental fees for 2024. Plus, we got two $1,000 donations. So we have the money. He took a check over to the city, put it in the trust fund. An hour later, everybody had a receipt from Cecilia, $13,000 for the installation. It's all done. So we were pretty happy about that, you know? And more money's dribbling in every day. So that's really good.
God bless you, Ann Hurd, and the money machine you have.
Well, I'll tell you, one of the best days of my life before Christmas, when I had to stay home and not see my grandkids because my husband had a bad cough. I got a letter addressed to me personally with a $1,000 donation inside. And I was over the moon.
Let's encourage that trend, shall we?
Yeah, so, and you know what? You have a QR code. All you have to do is put it on your camera. PayPal comes up, you can donate right there. Or you can use a debit or credit card. And our website that was made by Dean Sprague, who's a ham radio guru. I took my ham radio classes from him in this very room. He made that whole website and it's so beautiful. I hope you're looking at that too. It's www.fdacoregan.org. So anyway.
All right, too fun.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
And the next person is Cornelius.
Yes, yes. Hi, my name is Cornelius and I live in Dallas. First of all, I can't tell you how many times I've called into your city council meetings, followed the directions to make a public comment, only to hear the mayor ask if there's any calls and hear the city recorder say no. As this repeatedly happened, I didn't, never thought it was intentional. But honestly, I've started to wonder because I see a disturbing pattern of our city leader seemingly misleading the full public from either knowing about or being able to comment on motions that you seem to want to push through quickly. Couple of examples. At the September 5th, at the September 5th city council meeting, after hearing from a handful of residents who oppose low barrier homeless shelters in Dallas, city council member Kirsten Collins asked city leaders if there was a way to limit the number of citizens you guys have to listen to at future meetings. That's disturbing. It's un-American. Frankly, it's disgraceful that a city council member would try to silence the valid concerns of taxpayers simply because the majority of them may disagree with her on her liberal views on the issue or because she thinks her time is too valuable for them to be heard. I mean, if the schedule's too strenuous or too stressful, Ms. Collins, resignation is always an option. Another example. You guys recently solicited votes about the tax increase in a poll posted on the city's Facebook page. The problem is the city's population is about 18,000 people, but the city's Facebook page only has about 5,000 followers. And none of those have been verified to be Dallas residents or even real people for that matter. So how is that illegal or accurate sampling? My gut feeling is you chose this routine because you kind of think the voters are going to shoot down a tax increase to clean up a mess that frankly, you guys should have seen coming and you, so you made. The residents of Salem and Omsville removed members of their city council when they tried to sneak in tax increases. And I hope that's not what we have to do here to get you guys to do the right thing. Option four in your Facebook poll that you offered the public would have eliminated six police officers and six firefighters. I find it interesting that none of the options you offered, one through four, actually one through five, included cuts to the highest paid salaries in our city, including yours, Mr. Lada. You make $144,000 a year, plus benefits and a car allowance, unless I'm mistaken, and that is a lot of money, pun intended. By comparison, the city manager of Dallas, Texas makes $423,000 per year to serve a population of 1.245 million people, or $1.72 per resident per year. Here in Dallas, Oregon, we're paying our city manager $8 per resident to serve a population of 18,000 people. When we're in a tough situation like we're in, you have to ask why. Instead, I asked the city council to vote no on the tax increase that you guys are going to sign tonight and do the right thing. Send it to the voters. Until it gets on the ballot, I recommend that the city council fix its budget woes for 2024 by implementing 10% to 20% pay cuts for our top-paid bureaucrats. Not every city employee, just the top-paid ones. You guys won't even feel that. Our city leader should not be making double the median household income of its residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the consent agenda.
No, the caller dropped off.
Consent agenda is next. That's the approval of January 2nd, 2024 work session meeting minutes, approval of January 2nd, 2024 city council meeting minutes, and the December 2023 financial report. Is there anything you want to pull off the consent agenda? Not a dedicated motion.
Move to approve.
Move to approve and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, carries unanimously. Next on the agenda is reports or comments from the mayor and council members. If you have any comments, questions?
I would like to at least mention that, and I think Brian and I have talked about the sound systems and the audio and the ability for people to call in. We're, we're really needing to improve that, our equipment, so. Yeah, and so I reached out to Polk HS about the sound system. They've installed certain sound systems like this in, in their border county commissioners' room, in other buildings that they've had. They gave me leads to four or five different vendors to reach out to, so we're working on that right now. The ability for people to call in, we've validated the instructions work. We had a complaint that came in to the council, you all saw. Ms. Matthews, we tested it with her today, worked just fine. And so we don't think there is an issue. We don't know what it is. We've heard that complaint spread on Facebook. But every time that we've tested it internally, externally, it's worked. And so I don't think there, there is an issue with people calling in. I think that that is something that is, in our experience with testing it out, has not been substantiated.
I wouldn't really like to see us tested out with an employee of ours or a citizen that could.
We've, we've done that.
Oh, you did, you've done that.
Yeah, we did it several times with city employees, both while they're here at the office and outside of the office of City Hall. From, from in here, we tested it today with Ms. Matthews. She had no problem getting on, being able to testify. We've had people in council meetings call in on the phone before. Our auditor last year did their audit report through the phone. So we know the system works. And every time that it has been used, we know it's been used, it's worked. And so the complaints that we're hearing and seeing through Facebook and what Ms. Cornelius said tonight, we don't understand what the issue is because when, you know, it works. When we try, it works. So I don't know.
This isn't like calling in, but I've listened to council meetings before and had trouble hearing.
Yes, and the, and the static and the crackling issue is a separate, I'm just talking about people that have called in.
Right.
So that issue is the, that's, that's the issue with the sound system in this room and the connection to YouTube. So that's what we're gonna get some professionals in here to install a different sound system to resolve that issue.
It's frustrating, like listening and all's like.
Yep, yeah, it's, it's very frustrating. And we're, we've done a lot of stuff internally and we've made improvements. It's not 100% and we want to, we want to make it so that it's crystal clear every time. So that's why I'm gonna get some professionals to help it that fixed. Yeah, I don't know, do you have another comment on that?
The only thing I was gonna say is I can see when people call in and I admit them into the meeting. And this is the first night that I've had somebody call in. So it's not a matter of letting them testify or not. It's, there's just no participants on the phone.
So, you know, we, we know, we hear, we see what's going on on social media, but, and then, you know, we reached out to people, said, "Hey, connect with us and we can test it." And so when we've done that, the tests have run successfully. So again, I don't know what, what the disconnect is.
Is there confusion with the YouTube version versus the phone call?
I, I'm guessing that might be part of it is people think that, you know, when they're watching it on YouTube, which is just a live feed, that that's how they then can, you know, you know, call in. But they actually have to physically call in on the telephone using the number that we post on the agenda that goes out, you know, whenever we advertise meetings. And so I think that there may be some confusion there that someone's watching it on YouTube and thinking, "Oh, I wanna, I wanna call or I wanna testify," but they don't know how to from YouTube. You don't do it from YouTube. You call into the Zoom meeting, which is then live-fed through YouTube. So I think there may be some confusion there. But our instructions are pretty clear. We have a whole page dedicated into the agenda packet on how to call in and give testimony. So I, yeah.
And you get crystal clear, like audio and it.
So when people call in on the phone here, yeah, when we've had people call through the phone, our auditor is the main example I can remember doing within the last year. When they called in, we had no problem. They engaged with us, we engaged with them. It was only through the phone, it wasn't through a Zoom video feed. It wasn't through a computer, it was on the phone. And they gave a 10-minute presentation. We asked questions, they answered questions. So it was, we know the system works.
Sometimes it could be the quality of the cell phone versus a landline. They just don't know.
The instructions for calling in are very simple, very clear. They're on the back page of our agenda. Couldn't be much simpler, really.
You're making an assumption.
Sometimes in life, you gotta take risks.
Again, I assume the way the council was showing this saying is probably what the experience is. What's happening is people are watching on YouTube and feeling that they have an ability to talk through YouTube. And that's not, not the case. They have to call in on the telephone to the Zoom meeting in order to, to connect with the council remotely.
And I want to compliment Charlie on putting the mic in his mouth today because I know that the rest of, I know I've already had comments back that they were able to hear him today better because it was close. So if you, I'm gonna put David and Mike in charge. If you see the mic not within a couple inches of the presenter's mouth or if they're turning, we might need to increase the size of this monitor because I know that Charlie was, or the DDA was having to turn to the side. So it's harder for us to hear and people out in, on the internet to hear if they're turned off. That. Point moment, huh?
Okay, we'll have a nice segue reports from the city manager and staff.
All right, so nothing with the staff report, but I do have a couple of comments. First, the city council goal update retreat is scheduled for February 3rd at 9:00 a.m. It's at Chemecca, the Chemecca Center here in Dallas. So make sure that's on your calendars, you're showing up, not this Saturday, next Saturday, 9:00 a.m. We will have some finger foods there for you to eat for the two-hour meeting. And again, we're gonna be giving an update on the council's goals from all your department heads. So that should be a good meeting. We will stream that live on YouTube as well for people that would like to watch.
What time are you?
9:00 a.m.
You probably said where?
At the Chemecca Center. And so it'll last two hours. It's scheduled from 9:00 to 11:00. Beautiful resort. It's just a little bit different than here.
I'm gonna throw in Mr. Howard, just a few questions.
You and I can have a one-on-one after everyone else gets home. So then also, on February 17th is the city's 150th celebration as a community. Our incorporation date is on February 20th, but we're celebrating on Saturday the 17th. Ahead of time, rain, sleet, snow, maybe not ice. But at least those are the things we're, we're planning for and accommodating. There will be a parade, pet parade, historical vendors, lots of birthday cake. The pet parade, pet parade on the sidewalk, so bring your, bring your pets. So it'll be a really good show. Encourage the city council to sign up to be in the parade. Let me know if you cannot be there, otherwise I will expect you to be there and we will find transportation for you in the parade. Maybe we'll all pile in the mayor's car.
What animal are you gonna be?
Not the one the city provides because we don't provide him a car.
I'd rather be in the pet parade.
Just to make that clear. No. Although I might put my, my pet in the parade. Other than that, that's what we have on the schedule. I will be out of the office the rest of this week. Again, I let you know that, but didn't say it today. So after tonight, I'll be gone and I won't be available for contact. So Emily Gunn, our assistant city manager, will be in charge and have signing authority for the city. I'll correspond on that later today. That's it, mayor.
You can say about time that he took a vacation.
So next on is resolutions, resolution number 3521.
This is a resolution establishing the public safety fee.
Before we vote, yes.
Ready?
Yeah.
So before we have this vote, I know we had a couple of councillors missing last time, and we had a little bit of discussion, and there were a few things I wanted to clarify before I'm willing to make a vote. So I'm not in big favor, I'm not in favor of higher property taxes, however, the property tax options are temporary, there would be five-year bonds, as far as I'm remembering. And this is permanent with no cap, except that it's evaluated every year with the CPI, the Consumer Price Index. So before, we had a cap of it going up to $30, and now we have no cap. So if inflation continues to grow, and people are more and more broke, our fee could keep getting higher and higher with no cap. That's as far as my understanding. So correct me if I'm wrong as we go, I have a few little points, but that was one of them, so.
Do you want me to answer that question now?
Yes, that'd be easier.
So the council always have the authority to enact and repeal fees at any time. And so while the CPI is, is part of this resolution, the council can decide, you know, at this time next year, when we look at our audited numbers for this coming fiscal year, or this year that we're in right now, next year, and we decide, hey, we're in better shape than we thought we were going to be, that we forecasted, and we don't need this fee anymore. You can repeal this resolution and the fee goes away. So it's not a permanent fee, right? The council creates and takes away fees at your leisure. And the CPI is there in the event that you decide, and after looking at the audited numbers, that you don't need what we forecasted, which next year would be a $2.50 increase. Let's say you only need, you know, 50 cent increase, and your CPI covers that, then you don't have to do anything in terms of repealing a resolution or enacting a new resolution. So that's why the CPI is there, is just to keep up with inflation from year over year in the event that you continue to need the fee. But the council will, by resolution, evaluate their audited numbers each year and decide whether or not this fee needs to be retained.
So the only time I can think of a fee being removed would be like library fees. Our library doesn't charge late fees or lost book fees or whatever anymore, but I can't think of any other occasion. Sorry, I didn't correct.
Is the fee always going to be just for what is proposed?
Yes.
Then we say in the future, oh, we need two more police, and we're going to raise.
So the council, again, can make future decisions. This decision tonight, the resolution directs and dedicates the funding that would be raised through this fee to go into a separate fund in the budget, a public safety fund. That public safety fund would make a transfer monthly to the police and fire EMS personnel expense lines to cover those costs, so. The status quo cost, not increasing personnel, but paying for existing personnel on an ongoing basis for this next year. So the, the public safety fee, as is presented in this resolution, and until this resolution is repealed, that's how that money would be spent.
And it'll automatically increase if we do nothing?
Yeah, so if you do nothing and the resolution's not repealed in the future, so after looking at next year's audited numbers, you say, you know, we need, we continue to need the fee, we don't need to increase it, we don't need to decrease it, we just need to maintain it. With the CPI, you would just leave it alone and it would increase by the CPI next year on July 1st of 2025. It could, it would increase according to the CPI for next year.
So are they tied together, if the CPI goes up, but our costs go down, we don't, we're not, it's not automatically going to go up?
It would automatically go up unless the council repealed or amended the resolution. So let's say next year, you don't need the CPI, when, after evaluating the audited numbers and saying, hey, we know what we need and we don't need the CPI. You, I would recommend, and you would consider, an amendment to the resolution to remove the CPI.
You actually wouldn't need to amend the resolution, because the resolution contradicts that you can do a lower increase. That, that's already allowed in the resolution. You can't, you can't go above the CPI in the resolution.
But the CPI is automatic.
It's the, I would call it the default.
The default is increasing the fee.
If you do nothing, then the CPI would adjust.
But you could say, we don't need the CPI, or we need less than what the CPI is, that's what we.
It just feels to me like it's an open checkbook, regardless of how we manage our funds, our overhead. If the CPI goes up, it automatically goes up for no need.
Unless we do something about it.
Every year.
Unless we do something about it, but if we don't do something about it, it's going to go, it's like, that free subscription that automatically starts filling you in six months.
I think it's important to bear in mind that this isn't the kind of thing that's just going to slip through the cracks and sneak by unawares, because right in the resolution, there is language that says, and I'll quote it because it's short, the city council will review the public safety fee at least annually. Seems you got to do it at least once a year, we could do it more often. So we have to look at this frequently. It's not going to just suddenly coast away with nobody watching it, it's going to be under our microscope all the time. So those decisions are going to be our decisions to make based on what we see on the ground at the time. But it's not going to, you know, it's not, it's not something that's going to be decided in the back room with nobody watching, because we're required to take at least an annual look at this, by the resolution itself, it's right in there.
But reviewing it is different than voting on an increase. I would like to see some language that would say, we have control at that time to increase or decrease, rather than it just looking at it and make, let it happen.
So I'll answer two questions, one you kind of asked earlier, which is the purpose of the CPI, right? Why, why is that even in there? When the public safety fee we have today was created by ordinance, a CPI was not included in there. The funds were calculated based on entry-level police officer and firefighter EMT position at the time the fee was created. Within one year, that fund no longer supported those two positions for each, the police and the firefighter fee, because you didn't have an escalator, right? An employee, when they're hired, is hired on a scale, right? Step one, step two, step three, so on and so forth. They also are part of a collective bargaining unit, which typically is tied wages to a CPI increase annually. And so the rationale for including the CPI this time is, if you did nothing, you're not going to find yourself in arrears to maintain the personnel that you're trying to cover today next year, because you didn't have a CPI, because the employees under the collective bargaining agreement are going to have personnel cost increases next year, whether or not we do anything about that, because they're already part of a collective bargaining agreement. So the CPI, the language allows you to do nothing and still cover the costs of those personnel that you're retaining. So that's why the CPI is in there. It's not meant to make more money for the city, it's meant to cover the existing operational costs that you're covering with that fee this year, if you still need to cover those same costs next year. And the council has the authority, without explicitly stating it in the resolution, to adjust that fee. Like Lynn said, it's default that if you do nothing, the CPI would apply. But you have the ability to say, we're not going to apply the CPI this year, without giving, without explicitly stating that further in the resolution. You could also repeal the resolution at any time. So you, I don't think you need to state your authorities, you have that authority as a council.
Just to clarify, Council Shane's language there, he quoted, there's one other element. It says, the city council will review the public safety fee at least annually as part of the budget development process. And so it will be brought forward to the council through the budget process, to determine whether an adjustment should.
Any more discussion?
So my second point, that I wanted to briefly talk about, I heard a couple of councillors talking about this fee as being equitable. One, equity is not one of my favorite words, because, not because I don't believe in equity, but I believe it's misused very often, it's actually a Marxist term. In this case, this isn't equitable, it's equal. You're saying someone on a fixed income, someone who's living in a manufactured home in a park on a fixed income, someone who's a lower wage earner, who owns or has their little spot in a manufactured home, or a smaller single-house residence. They make $20,000, $30,000 a year, they have the exact equal same amount fee as someone who makes a million dollars. Someone who has a pool and a hot tub and perfect green grass and a water-thirsty garden may pay more in usage if they go over the gigantic cap of the water cap we have, but this basic fee is equal, that is an equity, that's equality, it's giving the same thing to both people. So I think that's a really important thing to, to see. There are, yes, there are renters, which I brought up last time, but you're also talking about homeowners. I know personally, I have friends who are lower-wage workers that work full-time and are still struggling to make ends meet. So you're giving them an equal fee to someone who, this isn't going to bother them at all. You could give them five times this fee, and they would still just write the check or even just let it go through their checking account and never even notice it being gone. So it's not equitable, it's equal. I just wanted to clarify the definition of those two things. Carlos, did you have something else, because I have an entirely different point, but I don't want to jump from topic to topic.
Just for the point of matter, I in fact use the word equitable. I can tell you, in 2002, I was laid off state trooper, as well as 138 other state troopers. And I can tell you that I suffered, my family suffered, my children suffered. We suffered economical colossity, we, we, we just bought a home and we suffered. And I, we didn't make enough money, we had to tighten our belt. The state of Oregon said, no, we were not going to support state police. They weren't going to support public safety. I would like to hear from you on how you propose to support the public safety and what your option would be.
I said at the last time we discussed this, the previous meeting before we had to reschedule this one, I, options one and three, which were both tax levies, option three looked less expensive, it's a property tax, it's a five-year levy, but it really wasn't. It was almost the same exact thing as option one. Option one actually preserved more services and actually added services to the city. But because it removes the initial public safety fee, that property tax amount actually comes out almost the same as option three. So like I said before, that would be my option. It also goes to the voters, which is a huge deal for me, is people, like, it was brought up before, this poll, people also had to join a group as part of this poll, apparently. There, there's been lots of discussion online on different platforms and in person about how they didn't want to give all this information on the internet, which I don't blame them. And on top of it, they don't want to get notifications from Polco over and over about different surveys, or this or that, they didn't know. It wasn't like a Survey Monkey where it's anonymous and you can just, you know, put in your information. I understand the need to have people register and put in an address, but I also know a lot of people felt uncomfortable with that, and a lot of people didn't even know about it, because a lot of people don't follow that particular Facebook page. I mean, we, there are a few people who shared it, I mean, I know I shared it on different community pages. Not everyone has Facebook, and a lot of people, even if they do, do not per, personal information on there. So to answer your question directly, I prefer option one. It goes to voters, it's almost the same exact cost overall as option three, but it actually gives more services to Dallas.
Mayor, if I can clarify real fast, options one, three, and five provide the amount of revenue to sustain all the same levels of services. So the different options did not retain more services other than option four, which was to reduce services. So one, three, five, all cover the same amount of services. So there's not one that gave more or less services. They provided one and three, small, different amounts of revenue, and that's because of the structure with a five-year levy all being collected upfront. Option five is a tiered approach, right? We're just talking about the first year. The five-year forecast showed an increase in this fee four additional times, up to a $30 amount. That would match the, the option one and option three financial ask. It's just done in a different way, and ultimately results in less money, because you have more payers into the system. So again, options one and three, the difference is, you're asking the voters to vote, to say yes to providing additional resources to pay for the existing services that they have today. And they pay more money under options one and three than they do under option five, which you're not asking them to vote on this decision, but they're paying less money overall over the five years that we forecasted and planned for. But the services are the same regardless of the option, except option four, which was to reduce personnel services.
Okay. Maybe I'm remembering the, the difference between option one and three being the public safety fee, be, safety fee being removed.
Correct.
In option one, so that's what, I apologize for the miscommunication, but that's.
We removed the fee in number one, which is why the levy amount was higher than in option three, where you retain the fee and paid a lower levy amount.
Correct.
But the, the revenue was to retain existing levels of service amongst city personnel.
This, is it only a five-year period that it can increase? Or is it just a future opportunity, which is now it's a fee and it's going to either increase or decrease? I mean, I guess we can.
So I'll say, yeah, I'll say, like I said before, the council, when you impose fees, whether it's this fee or any other fee, you have the authority to create fees and remove fees. It's one, it's one end to levy taxes, to be honest, right? Government is, is known for a few things that we do, right? We levy taxes and we regulate property, those are things that people generally hate about government. But that's two of the things that you're responsible for as a governing body. And you have the ability to levy fees, and so that's what you're being asked to do with this resolution tonight, right? That you've directed the city to, to prepare that resolution. You can repeal the fee at any time, right? So it's not, this is not an in perpetuity decision, it's a decision that you're making right now for this next fiscal year. If after this fiscal year and after our audit, we decide that we don't need this fee anymore, it can be repealed.
Do we need the $4.00 and $0.50 fee?
You're repealing that fee. Yes, you need $12.50 now.
I've worked 28 years as a police officer, I've worked about two and a half years as a firefighter, I worked about five years as an EMT, 21 years as a soldier in the US Army. I, part of what I'm doing in this job is to support the men in blue, the people with the fire department, the people that have to work 24 hours a day, seven days a week, oftentimes on holiday, and they work harder than a lot of us do here. And I'm going to do whatever it takes to support them.
So kind of what I hear is you don't trust the voters to support your police.
No, what I'm saying is, I'm, I'm just telling you how I feel, and I'm open for your thoughts. I'm always open to hear somebody else's thoughts.
This will be the last comment.
I think Debbie had her hand up before me, if it's the last comment, that's not fair.
Yeah, I just wanted to, well, I did have a short comment, but I just wanted to assure Carlos, everyone here loves our police and fire and EMS, all of us, I have no doubt, no doubt about that at all. And the, the one clarification I had was actually about billing. So, and then I promised I'm ready to vote, but about billing, it seems like there was something in there. If someone, out of curiosity, if someone pays all of the bill except the public safety fee every month, their water cannot be turned off, right? Their services. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I was reading that right. So if you pay your water and sewer, you pay the whole bill except whatever the itemized public safety fee? Okay.
So, yeah, there, it's, it's, there's nuance to that statement, but yes, their water cannot be turned off because they don't pay a public safety fee. However, that fee continues to run with their account.
Right.
So when they move, right, there's a final billing and they pay for all the unpaid fee that's not. fee that's not paid. And if they don't pay that after they move, they're sent to a collection agency and it's collected that way. So the liability for a person that doesn't pay their fee because they're, whatever reason they choose not to, that fee does not leave them, it doesn't just disappear, right, it doesn't pop like a bubble, it continues to, to sit with them on their account and that will be paid at some point in the future. But their water will not be turned off because they don't pay a fee.
I think, Michael, I, I'm just going to add to the conversation, I think Michael wanted to have a nice closing statement.
Go ahead and add your conversation.
I think it's really important that we as a council identify and acknowledge that if we are going to be a council in a city that states that we are in support of our public services, our police, our fire, and our EMS, that that needs to include paying for those services. And there are not nice words that get bantered around pretty regularly in our city, especially right now, about people who want to use services but refuse to pay for them. And that's what we're discussing. These are services that we know, we, we all know we need and we have to then pay for the services that we need.
I completely agree, but I'm not going to vote for this unless we amend this particular sentence. Subject to section seven of this resolution, the, um, the amount of the public safety fee shall automatically be adjusted each July, beginning July 1st, 2025, based on the percentage of change in the CPI. It doesn't say anything about upon the approval of this council. It automatically goes up.
That's in section seven, two.
Yes. We change that, you got my vote.
Can you say what, I'm looking for that part, what part are you?
Section seven.
Very bottom of page sixty-nine, very bottom.
Thank you, I found it.
Section four, amount of fee, sub-paragraph two.
Do you have a suggestion of what?
Well, just to be clear, you gotta read that in context, it's section seven, sub-two that says the council will review, uh, and may reduce but not increase the amount automatically adjusted under section four, two of this resolution. So section seven, two effectively tests that.
It takes care of it.
I don't like the words. Section four comes first in precedence, correct?
No, no, section seven, two, one, five, four, yeah.
So I understand the, it legally makes sense and it's valid legally that we can opt to not raise it or to charge a lesser amount, but I think what Counsel Briggs is saying, and I agree with, is the default of it being raised is what we could do something about. Why does the default have to be raising it? Why don't we, every year, since we review it, why don't every year we approve an increase or not?
Strike that here, hear that sentence?
Well, the only problem with striking that sentence is that, that gives us the ability to have a upper limit set that it can't go over without repealing. Do you follow? The CPI sets an upper limit, we can always decrease it without repealing the resolution, correct?
Right. Then you can't increase.
So, can you think of any clear language that you could put in that, I, I understand Counsel Briggs's idea, I think it's already in there in section seven, two.
It is.
That we're reviewing it.
You gotta read it together in context.
And so it's not automatic.
Yeah, you've got a different word, but it wouldn't change the effect of the resolution.
I mean, can we just put the fee shall be reviewed, be adjusted, I don't know how, what other word we can use.
I have a question.
Instead of shall automatically be adjusted, could you just say the public safety fee may be adjusted?
It says that we may reduce it.
May be adjusted each.
It's automatically going up, but it says that we may reduce it.
So Lane, I guess the question is, is if you modified subsection four, two, to say, subject to section seven of this resolution, the amount of the public safety fee may be adjusted each July 1st, beginning July 1st, 2025, based on the percentage of change in the conservative price index, CPIU Pacific Cities Index, second half report published in the preceding February of each year.
If you say maybe, then the state council action each year.
Right.
To adjust.
Correct. But that way, you, you may increase it to the maximum of the CPI, but you may not, and that way it's not automatic. I think the, I think the concern that everybody has is it's automatic.
Well, okay, but again, four, two says subject to section seven, so they're, they're connected. Now, yeah, uh, uh, so what am I hearing that you don't want to have?
You don't want it automatic.
So, so why reference the CPI at all then?
To give us an upper limit so we don't have to. It gives you, it gives you an ability to use the CPI in the event that you want to, but it's not automatically applied without having to.
Well, you can always, you can always reference any, any index that you want to when you're setting fee.
I know, but the thing is, is you're, you, you wouldn't have to approve a resolution each year, you would just, you could do it by motion at that point.
Well.
Right?
Which is what this says already.
Yeah.
I know, but the concern that.
We're not, we're not affecting any real change here.
The concern that, well, the concern that Counsel Briggs has is if no motion is made, a fee is auto, an adjustment is automatically made. What Counsel Briggs would like is that the council, the council considers and has a conversation now.
Okay. I don't, I don't want to wordsmith this in a meeting, if, if, let's get a sense of the council and if that's what the council wants, then I can rewrite, I just don't want to do it in the middle of the meeting here, that's dangerous.
Sure. David?
I guess I'm the outlier here, but this really strikes me as angels on the head of the pin, because as Lane has pointed out more than once, section seven is, is what the real control, because sub, section four is subject to the restrictions in section seven, and section seven says, we have to review this every year at budget time. So whether it's the CPI, whether you, whether you use the CPI, uh, or whether you don't, whether you say yes, take the CPI default, or no, we're going to change it, we have to consciously look at it and decide every year. So it's always going to come under the microscope every year and we're going to have to decide to take the CPI, to not take it, to, to do whatever we decide to do. So this, this, yeah, like I said, I guess I'm the outlier here, this really feels to me like angels on the head of the pin.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, I appreciate the fact that this discussion has kept going, but I do find it inappropriate in the middle of a council discussion to say this is the last comment when councillors are still wanting to comment. I find that inappropriate and unprofessional, just want to point that out. But I am glad it continued fifteen comments later.
Is there a difference between the word shall and will?
Uh, we don't know what context.
So the city council will review the public safety fee or shall?
No, effectively the same thing.
Mine says may.
Yours says.
No, no.
On section two.
Not in section seven, it doesn't.
I mean, or two of section seven.
City council will review the public safety, yeah, that's, that, that's a mandatory charge, that's the same.
In that context?
Yeah.
It is.
Yes. So I just need clarification with the council, if there's any need to be drafted.
First and foremost, we live in a republic, which means we're elected officials. We have to make decisions, they don't have to be great decisions, you can feel uncomfortable making the decision. You are voted in by our constituents, this is one of those decisions that we have to make and we have to make it fairly soon because we have bypassed what Counsel Verden has talked about, because if we don't make a decision on this fee this year before the budget committee starts in what, two weeks, three weeks? Budget's probably already started.
Budget process is underway, it's developed.
Um, we can't do, send it to the voters. We can still send it to the voters, one or three or five. Um, we've heard from a lot of our constituents about option five being what they are wanting, a metered implementation of supporting the budget as it is currently, well, not the budget, the.
Level of service.
Levels of service as they are currently, and that's what we're supporting in this. If we need to revise, I, I feel fully comfortable with what section seven, subpart number two says, in reviewing it, we will review it every year, it's reviewed at the budget committee level, I believe, budget development process, it has to come before council, we have to make a decision. I would, is that a motion every year?
Yeah.
Yes.
It'd be part of your budget.
So you would have to make a motion every year before it's implemented under section four, subsection two, one and two. Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
So there is a motion that has to be made.
It will be in the budget.
So it's a separate motion as part of the budget.
But we have to talk about it during the budget process.
Even if the motion is there to keep what's there, we always have to do it.
Still have to talk about it.
And so with that, I don't see any need to change what's been presented. I believe that our staff attorney has written very clearly what we wanted him to write. The word, I understand the word automatic sounds vicious and that it's automatically happening, but we've just gone through how section seven amends section four every year at council, during council session and budget process. So I'm, I'm willing to take a vote tonight. And I would encourage Counsel Verden specifically, so that, I appreciate your comments, and I would please spearhead, if we're wanting to put this out to a major, to a levy, this isn't the end of the conversation, this is just, we've run out of time, even though we've spent three years getting to this point, because we knew this was happening, we made a lot of deep, deep cuts, and we had apartment, apartment heads that came in and found cost savings to allow us this much time, the three years, and it takes a long time, nothing in here, nothing moves fast. And so this is part of the process. And so part of that process is not letting this conversation die. If it does pass tonight, if it doesn't pass, then we've got to make cuts in the budget.
I can guarantee you the conversation's not going to die.
Yeah.
We don't know.
No, and it, it's also a fact that, well, five out of nine councillors were appointed, not elected, appointed by the sitting councillors. So that is a big, big difference too, that's part of my hesitation of the voters not getting a say, they didn't get a say in that. I mean, I'm glad I'm here, truly, and I'm glad the other appointed people are here, but that is a little bit different, a little bit different scenario. Uh, this is also an election year, so, um, I'm glad for that because they do get a little more say in all that.
Any further discussion? Secretary Colwell?
Counsel Jants?
Yes.
Counsel Shane?
Yes.
Counsel Verden?
Absolutely not.
Counsel President Schilling?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Bariantos?
Yes.
Counsel Briggs?
Yes.
Counsel Collins?
Yes.
Counsel Fitzgerald?
No.
Motion is passed seven, uh, two.
I just ask that every councillor that's here and in the future, you pass it on to who replaces it, that we do review this earnestly because it's an extremely important decision every single year.
And it is not cast in concrete.
Any further discussion?